And Joe Mason is supposed to be here.
He's.
Oh, is he? Okay. So do we want to wait for him to walk in real quick, or should I just poke my head out there?
I think we're right at five. Yeah, I'm still trying to set up. Yeah, I'm just gonna join the meeting.
Here it comes. Okay.
Okay.
Get this it up.
We didn't have anything out there, so I wasn't sure.
Wait, there was just a B O C C, so we're a little bit.
You don't have to be.
Kind of set up for that. Yeah.
You don't have to be petty flapper. And I guess we didn't bring our, that's all right. That's okay, Bonnie, I think. Okay, so you're Kelly, you're Craig. As long as the chair is in the right place, you got her. Okay.
And if you're able to promote me.
Yeah. Okay.
She's, she's doing it. Yep, I'm there.
Okay, well, everyone is settled and Hannah, you're able to get in.
The free, yeah, I said, join us panelists, is it not? Looks like I should be able.
Is it allowing you now or not?
There we go.
Is it just a delay?
It's just going, it's just going a little bit slowly.
Always thanks for some of those in down here. Okay, and.
There we go.
If we're ready.
Today is a truth day, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, Picking County Plains only work session. Um. Any comments from the planning side before we start?
Nope, I don't, we have any comments.
Missioner comments? All right. Um, Picking County Comp Plan, Community and Economic Health, Regional Approach.
Thank you. Um, I've, I do want to introduce, for those of you who don't know, Riley Timmons, who is with Design Workshop, and she's on our Vision Twenty Fifty team, so she is joining us virtually tonight. Uh. So yeah, this is our fifth work session uh on the Comprehensive Plan. And uh if we go to the next slide, you all have seen this slide, but for those who are participating um remotely or in the audience, we'd like to cover this piece really grounded discussion um in the Vision Twenty Fifty Community Goals that were identified by the Board of County Commissioners and the Community Growth Advisory Committee um to, and I'll read it, implement bold climate action while balancing our economy, preserving our rural and wild lands, and supporting an equitable and affordable community. And those have really been uh the guidelines for the Vision Twenty Fifty Project as a whole and for the Comprehensive Plan development. So tonight, as Zach said, this is an informal work session to give the Planning and Zoning Commission an opportunity to review and comment on the draft comp plan prior to formal adoption by you all, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and subsequent approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Tonight, we're going to be focused on um two policy chapters. Um, one, Community and Economic Health, and the other, Regional Approach. And as you know, all of the input received from the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, the work group, the Board of County Commissioners, and the community at large uh will be incorporated into a final draft that we will be bringing forward to you at a later date, and we'll get to timeline um in the next slide. Again, uh, Planning Commission, you've seen this slide several times. I'm not going to walk through the entire thing, but we've been at the Comprehensive Plan work for about a year and a half now, I think that's right. And uh done a lot of work on existing conditions, developing groundwork, refining policy direction, and drafting the Comprehensive Plan, and we're in that far right column now um launching the draft plan for public review. Over the, the, this last summer and during the fall, we've, we've done a lot in the way of public outreach to inform the public about the plan and get as much input as we, as we have been able to. Uh, you can see we're in that, that yellow highlighted uh line there, Planning and Zoning Commission Work Sessions, where we are getting more input from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we'll take all of the input we've received to date, draft a final uh Comprehensive Plan for uh review. We'll bring that back to you. Before going into the public hearing process, before, before we do that, uh, we'll, we'll refer the, the plan out to uh the jet, to partner agencies, caucuses, municipalities, um, and some s- s- specific stakeholders. Um, we'll get those referrals out and then come back to you with a final draft uh for review in a, in a um public hearing and it, for adoption. And then um we'll move into an approval by the Board of County Commissioners. After that. Again, you've seen this slide before. Um, just really, we want to quickly um recognize the roles and responsibilities of those who have and will continue to participate in the Vision Twenty Fifty process. Uh, we've gotten a lot of uh community input uh along the way. Um, the Vision Twenty Fifty Work Group was integral in informing the Comprehensive Plan, the Vision Twenty Fifty Direction um to date. Third column here, you all, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you know, um, you review and provide feedback and direction to staff on the draft Comprehensive Plan. Then, according to state statute, you have the authority to review and adopt the Comprehensive Plan. And then you will be acting as the formal recommending gavvy to the Board of County Commissioners when we move forward into, into Land Use Code Amendments. That final column there is Board of County Commissioners who who do approve the Comprehensive Plan following Planning and Zoning Commission adoption. Um, and then review and adopt Code Amendments and Land Use Code Amendment, Building and Energy Code and Land Use Amendments um again through a formal public hearing process. We've seen all of this, but so if I am going too fast, anyone has questions, please um jump in. So this last slide, again, you've seen this, just to reiterate the fact that there has been a lot of, we have done a lot of public uh community outreach um over the last several months in particular, and um use several tools to communicate, including in-person pop-up events. We've attended several caucus meetings, um targeted, had targeted stakeholder outreach, and also um most recently did a community mapping charrette that was well-attended, and we got a lot of good feedback in the, in that, from that effort. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Hannah Hunt to provide an overview of the first chapter we'll be, we'll be reviewing this evening.
Hi there, Hannah Hunt, um, Long Range Planner with Picking County. So we've been marching through each of these chapters with you all, one by one. This is the fifth um chapter, which is Community and Economic Health. And so the context informing this big picture is that um seeking community and economic health means promoting and supporting the both social as well as the economic well-being um for our community. And there's a lot of factors that inform um the balance of this community and economic health. Maybe as you recall, kind of way back when, these were separate chapters. And we, throughout the process, working with you all, decided this should be just one chapter because as the CGAC, the Community Growth Advisory Committee, you know, recognized a lot of the community health is really related to that economic dynamics that are present. So um, a big factor of that is affordability that we've heard again and again. And even though wages have increased and have increased relative to our region, still not keeping pace with cost of living, which presents many um challenges throughout our community for ourselves, for um people who live in Picking County, people who work in Picking County. So affordability, commuting and transportation, limited housing, opportunities are real stressors um that contribute to mental health, quality of life challenges, the sustainability of our, our local economy. So that's the backdrop around which this chapter um is trying to get at this kind of question of balancing economic sustainability with growth pressures and quality of life values that are essential to community health. So we've talked about natural environment, built environment. Now we're here at the um social and economic piece of the plan. The, many of the policies that are carried forward and are represented in this plan um are informed directly by the work of Picking County Human Services, both their plans as well as their um kind of strategic direction and conversations with their staff. Um, Public Health, Picking County Emergency Services. So those are aspects that the county, kind of within the, with county span of services that are um from a policy direction captured within this chapter. Um, many of the caucus master plans also speak to have policy direction related to this with, which has also been included within this um plan. And um variety of public engagement and, and high topics for priorities which have been um influenced in the, the policy and, and ultimately in the implementation, which will come at our next meeting. And then kind of from a big planning standpoint, the Picking County Hazard Mitigation Plan and Emergency Operations Plan um directly informs the hazard mitigation um area. So, and then kind of big picture, so on the left are the different um policy areas that are within this chapter. We'll, if we remember the last PNC meeting that we had, was about community housing and that we moved at the direction, we moved all of the policies related to housing into that section of the new section of the plan, which we reviewed with you all last meeting in October. So the access to housing will be, you know, was consolidated and we reviewed that last um meeting. But the rest of these still remain in this section and primarily are really hitting that balanced economy value and the equity and affordability, but also have overlap with some of the, the climate goals as well as the um rural preservation. And then we've seen this with the other chapters too, but there, these policy areas are supported by other themes and different portions of the plan. Primarily, a lot of these topics are also touching regional approach. So there's a lot of areas where our community and economic health. Clearly, that's not something that we as Picking County can do only within our boundaries. So a lot of this, these policies also are supported by policy direction that's in the regional approach. And um with that, we'll do kind of a scan of the regional approach, just overview, and then we'll go into the policy sections. How, how's that sound?
Right, okay. So this chapter, the Regional Approach uh Chapter, as the name implies, first and foremost recognizes the county's role as a part of the larger region, right? The challenges we face can't be solved unilaterally, and this is something that the Community Growth Advisory Committee stressed. So this chapter is intended to address decisions made by the county, their impact, and how we support a sustainable and resilient regional economy and quality of life for the future in that context. So the, the policies in this chapter are generally consistent with an existing policies in the Land Use Code that have been carried forward um with some additions um to reflect CGAC recommendations specific to transportation, climate, and partnership to support these goals. And we'll go into some detail here in a minute, but this is just to provide an overview of the, to provide some context. So again, here um big picture, uh, this is looking at the, the regional approach policies on the left and how, to what extent they're um consistent and, and in alignment with the, the community values that are in the far right columns there. And as you'll see, there's several of these policies area, policy areas that are in fact consistent with both climate goals, balanced economy, equity and affordability, um and, and across the board, you can, you can see to what extent those, that alignment exists. So then again, uh, these cross-cutting themes are intended to identify policy areas in the Regional Approach Chapter that is, that are supported by other policies in um in, in other uh chapters within the plan, cross-cutting themes. Regional transportation um exists here, but it also is uh is identified and addressed in the Built Environment Chapter and Community Economic Health Chapter. Um, so again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but there are a lot of cross-cutting themes for for the policies that are, that are identified in the Regional Approach uh Chapter. And then before we launch into the details for both of these chapters, um, we just wanted to remind you that the policies in the plan will be implemented using several different tools. Some of them will be implemented um through Land Use and Energy Code Amendments. Um, some will be implemented as specific actions associated with county plans that exist um that may be updated as we move forward. Some will be implemented um through programs and policies of the county, and some will be implemented through coordination with partner agencies. So just to keep in the back of your mind that all of these are going to lead to implementation um using a lot of different tools. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Hannah Hunt, who's going to go into some detail on the, on the Community and Economic Health policies.
Great. And before I do that, I've got some copies of the attachment, if anyone would like a hard copy of the policies, if that's helpful for you to go through. I've got two.
Here.
I'm happy to.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, it's nice to have the paper copy.
How many? This one's, you just want two or three?
Okay. But you don't like that? Like you have some notes on there.
Wow. Already.
We've got.
Another physical.
Sure.
This is the eight fifteen draft.
Is that the revised one you have?
This is the eight fifteen, so this is the one that's the, that's the version, yeah.
We don't have.
Publicly, yeah.
Yeah, there were some things. Yeah. Those have. Potentially.
And, yeah. Yeah, and so just to be, just so we're all on the same page, so the draft that we're reviewing today is the eight fifteen draft, and that's been for Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning to Mi- Commission to go through each chapter. We've been working off of that same timestamp, eight fifteen draft. As we get these revisions, we will be updating. We've already received some comments, you know, through surveys, through public feedback around these chapters, but we're working off of that same eight fifteen, just so it's consistent with the plan version that um is publicly available and that the Planning Commission has reviewed the other chapters. So just for context there. Um, and I'm, so I'm going to go into this. I also have the PDF um digitally available, so I can pull that up on the screen if we want to when we get into these policies. So, um, we, so kind of as we go through this, you know, as, as has been the, the case with the rest of these policies, really any clarification, what's missing, um, and then items that stand out as priorities for implementation. So we'll do this um as we go through each of these policy sections, consistent with our approach to date. Um, so the healthy community, uh, this policy area is pulling through or identifying policies and programs related to healthy community in a broad sense, so social, physical, emotional, behavioral. Mental health is within behavioral health um in alignment with Picking County Public Health and Picking County Human Services Departments. Um, and so that's kind of the broad brush. Will be carried out through new as well as current county programs. And um a lot of coordination with partner agencies that work in the community health space, from mental health to um physical health to, to um social programs. And I will, let me pull up the PDF as well. So if there are any comments specifically here, I, we can um dive into this section. Let's see, you're seeing my screen, great. So the policies here, um, supporting the Healthy Community Fund, um prioritizing prevention, specific for behavioral and mental health, access and coordination of care, um, another behavioral health needs. One item that I'll just note is we, um, so the way that, that public health talks about behavioral health is that that's inclusive of mental health. Although it may be, we've received some comment that that may need to be called out to just be really clear. And within the definition that mental health is um uh within the behavioral health sphere. Um, equitable access and functional needs, bilingual and bicultural care, self-sufficiency, strong community networks, um, climate change impacts to health, that's specifically coming through um through a public health improvement plan, public engagement, participation, and access to recreation, arts, and civic activities. So I'll pause there and let, kind of same question, if there's anything missing or clarifications, old edits from the um, from the Planning Commission.
One point two and one point four.
Prevention and support for behavioral health needs.
Yeah.
Potentially, I think that the um, the intention on the prevention is to recognize that that's um kind of the, I think the way that the, the public health talks about is kind of upstream support. So making sure that prevention is really the, the kind of orientation from a care standpoint. And then four is really kind of underscoring that support for behavioral health and mental health um needs. So they are, they are kind of intended to do different things. Maybe that needs clarification, but that's the intent, is that one is really about preventative, early stages of care. The other one is about um behavioral and mental health prioritization.
I'm, I'm going to dive right in because this bothered me about these sections. There, there's really no discussion of education in schools. Just, they're mentioned in passing, that we have a great school system, and we really need to support that. And that could go, in this section, it could go, i- if that is in chapter five, one, help the community, that could go elsewhere in here, but I really think it belongs here somewhere.
Yeah, good point.
And it should be specifically.
Like K through twelve education, are you talking about?
I can, I can suggest specifics, but it's really, yeah, K twelve education, uh, support for.
Okay.
We do have grade schools, but they do face challenges. And those are challenges that are in some way unique to our community, and in other ways. Sometimes are unique to our community and our stance. In other ways, they're kind of like challenges that are felt nationwide, but we kind of don't recognize because we think we're in a bubble. But they're there. Sorry, I have a middle schooler.
Sorry, you know that.
Pretty in tune with this.
Yeah.
Good input.
I see the good and bad in you.
Yeah.
But they're great, and we have a really dedicated um a group of teachers, administrators, and they, they're really good. They're all, they deserve support. And that's definitely a keystone of our community, and anyone who's thinking about the nature.
And do we need to um discuss public versus private at all? And I'm not, you know, where this is being contradisturbed. And I don't know whether there's stints you need to be made at all about supporting education. Just ask them question. I don't, I don't, I have not had an answer to that yet. I don't, I don't know. I, I, I think it's well said, it's just support education.
Maybe just the broad statement is all inclusive.
Get our foot in the door in this document with the cost of this.
Okay.
But you're facing funding challenges, so, yeah, don't leave me to go on, I'm sure you're done.
Yeah. Yeah, any other comments?
You know, now that we bring that up, we do have a lot of views of sports, A B S C. Maybe that goes under one point one one. Do we call that out?
Yeah, and let's think as we go into that second portion, which is the kind of lifelong services, which does get at, is intended to kind of get at those different stages, so I'll keep that note and we can think through where that might land. Joe.
Yeah.
And then, I'm sorry, I skipped over this one point, one two. It is on the sole one on this last next page, which is um life cycle stage specific support. And that's really coming through county programs. Um, making sure that the life stage, kind of where you are in uh age and stage is considered when services are um provided and kind of calibrated. So that is also within that section. If, shall I keep, shall I keep moving? Okay. Um, so this second lifelong services um is programs related to, like throughout the course of life, recognizing that there are um different um programs and policies that support different stages from, you know, cradle to grave. And primarily, this supports um, or is, is kind of pulling out different aspects of work done by both human services, public health, and emergency services too, to some extent. So what's captured within this is, I'll just read the, the overall headings, but lifelong advocacy, early childhood, youth and family, adult services, older adults and, and housing. Um, we may think if that's appropriate here, that gets pulled into that housing chapter. Um, older adult support, age-friendly community, non-English speaking adults, intergenerational connections, and lifelong education. So there is some reference to education here in that two point ten.
But the lifelong just seems more like.
Kind of continuing education, kind of stuff. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we'll make that note in that healthy community to call that out, that K twelve. Anything else here that you all want to comment on or um amplify, edits, anything missing?
And, and also, as we go through, if there are any of these that you think really are priorities in terms of, well, this is something we'd like to see implemented as a priority, um, go ahead and, and point, and, and identify those, those policies, if, if there are any that stand out. That'd be great. Thank you.
I guess on lifelong services. If you need to say anything about food security. I'm still, I kind of think, you know, I'm with those brothers now.
Yeah, and that, that does show up in the local food section, section five, which is a full, you know, and, and kind of the next, the, the genesis of that is that that did come up. And then there was enough input that said, hey, let's make that its own section. So, um. And then there was enough input that said, hey, let's make that its own section, so um. We will, we will go to that. Um. Okay, I will, I'm gonna keep, keep moving if that is all right, chair. Um, so as we, just to kind of again clarify the access to housing moved into the combined housing section that we reviewed at the October. Um, planning and zoning meeting. The number four section is economic sustainability. And I would say that this is an interesting section because this has, is a lot of um. Polling from policies that are present within a lot of, several, several of the caucus master plans speak to different aspects around. Um, um, economic. Um, topics related to where commercial activities may be appropriate as well as um, desire for home-based. Um, work, um, uh, kind of home-based businesses. And a few of the plans also support different types of economic diversification kind of broadly. So there is aspects from the um, the caucus plans that are in this. As well as um, related to other community partners that really work on both workforce as well as local business topics. Um, we received a lot of um, feedback throughout the last year and a half. About making sure that the workforce that is working in Picken County but may not live in Picken County. Is represented within this document, there is acknowledgement of um, that workforce being uh. In, in both the policy and from the planning, a um, stakeholder from a planning standpoint. And um, as well as recognition of other community partners that work with um, the, the workforce and local businesses. So the policies that are captured within here are economic resilience. Economic diversification, partnerships, economic partnerships, workforce development. Year-round financial stability, improvements to financial security, local pipelines. Critical community services, community-oriented and local business, as well as engagement with the workforce. Um, and I would also say that just recognizing the um, needs and the, the presence of. Workforce especially shifts in terms of a tourist-based economy to. Home service economy was something that was very present within the discussions of the Community Growth Advisory Committee, so you'll see that reflected here. Um, as well. But would be great to get feedback on these policies and to Ellen's point as well would be great to. Think about priorities in terms of implementation, um. So discussion here would be, would be welcome.
Uh, this, this is not my uh, strength, my area, if I have an area of strength, it's not this, more goes so far to say, you know, these kind of things. Uh, you know, it seems it's well-written, it's well-stated. You know, um, I still believe that the Aspen is the economic driver for the valley, you know, so the regional approach. As we have all these. Goals, it's great. But I don't, I don't know how to um, expound on information, it's not a game.
And I guess maybe a question for you, Doug, would just be, does this feel aligned with the discussions that were a part of the growth committee that you were a part of? Um, for the most part.
Yeah, I, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, the, the, the growth committee discussions were a lot around. Um, the change in economics of. Um, high wealth, high wealth household than versus. More outward-facing uh, businesses that are taking care of a bigger group of people. And I, I, and I think that's a really difficult one to. Put down on paper and, and, and write. Goals and regulations or goals and how, how we achieve something like that. You know, it's hard to compete financially against. People that want to have what they want to have. So. It feels like, as I said, it, it feels like it covers all of the areas that um, makes sense to me.
I'd really like to see four eight blown out, um, address. Health workers, first responders, educators, public service workers, they'd leave it like this, that to see. To be more of an emphasis, because those are critical to, we're, we're talking growth to twenty fifty. And we're gonna have to plan for this, because these individuals are critical to our growth and our community. Similarly, the local pipelines, um. I really, this is just me, I, if we want people to grow up in this community and come back. But in this community and service community, intergenerationally, um, we can help provide. Ramps back in for people who grew up here, went to school here, graduated here, one way and want to come back. I know there's just one way to college or one way to build a career. And those would be a great base of educators and healthcare workers, um, within the school, we are losing some of our traditions. Because we don't have, we're coming back who went to school here, um. And that really puts some of those traditions, they've been a, a pretty important threat point, um, outdoor ed. I, I've heard from a lot of the volunteers in outdoor ed and the capstone in eighth grade. That there just aren't as many around, you know, graduates who did it, who volunteered for years.
Right.
They're just not there like they used to be. Um, and having on-ramp to key the whole community or giving them a ramp back to the community. It's, I think, pretty crucial to maintain our longevity.
And may I just, that makes sense to me on the local pipelines, just a clarification on that four point eight. Um, you were saying kind of expand on that, is that, are there additional critical services that you would like to see listed? Or is that recognizing that's important from an implementation standpoint? Or I guess I'm just trying to understand kind of what, what the best, what your kind of recommendation is in terms of emphasizing that. Or how you're, how you're thinking about that?
I think it deserves better articulation in the document overall, I, I would be. Happier if we had a whole subsection in chapter five, um. Like subsection four, here we're talking about economic sustainability. Have a subsection at that level, uh, having to do with critical community services that could include local pipelines as well. I think it's its own issue. But it deserves importance. More of a bullet, you know.
So, Chuck, the, the local pipeline and, and the critical communities, community services, you know, the, the. Biggest issue like far is housing, if there's opportunity for jobs and. Do everything, if you can provide house, if you can find housing, housing's a whole other thing, so. You know, it, it's great to have these other programs, but the housing seems to be the critical piece. If you provide housing, the jobs are available.
But if you provide housing, but you don't provide housing for these things, then you're kind of providing empty housing. And in the housing, um, we don't have a mention of homelessness, we do have homelessness in Picken County, but. I personally think it needs to be addressed, and I'd like to see that in the list.
Yeah.
The new thing that used to be.
Yeah, that's a good note, we have. Yeah. Um, that makes sense, and it may be that we. Kind of capture these different things related to community services and just build that out further. And these different aspects that are kind of related to that community services kind of live within that, even if it. Connects to areas that are in other parts of the plan, just to make sure that that's. Kind of identified, like we have done in some other areas where we say, here's the kind of goal, and then there's kind of subbullets under it of. Here, how these things kind of support this broader policy, um, would something like that? Makes sense to do?
Yeah, I'm looking at the organization, I'm thinking. This, maybe we title a section, let's call it five point zero, zero for the moment. Because it goes before five point one, and it's critical, community services. Maybe it goes before healthy caring, maybe it comes after, but right up front, there was.
Some way to make that, yes.
All right, I'd like to, but they are critical. I just don't feel like we get anywhere without this base. There was something hiding in here, you say the in a four, public service workers. I understand a major challenge is even snowplow drivers to learn, getting here because they live down valley, they have to get here in a storm. To plow the roads so we can get places in the storm, you know, these are the real. Um, not fancy, critical needs, the work.
One of the challenges that we've heard is defining. Who are those critical, you know, what are those critical community services, because there, you know, there's some people who. Believe that what, some of those services are more critical than others, how do you define those? So if you go, you know, we, we've made an attempt um, to define them, but. We've had some, a little bit of pushback on that as well, saying, well, how do you define it? How do you narrow that down? Um, so that's just something that we'll, we'll have to consider, but that, a, good point. I mean, everyone agrees that that, we've heard, we heard that from the CGAC as well, or pretty early on that. We really need to address that, that element.
Perhaps we can ground our approach and some research. Into literature on community development to like help us define. From third-party sources of research, what those critical, critical services are, and then we can at least narrow the debate to around the others.
Right. Right. Yeah, I think that, uh, understood, and um, that's good feedback and direction for us. Zach, anything from you?
Zero four point three, the economic partnership. I just, I think we should strengthen that language a little bit, because there's. There's other, just like for an example, Ski Pro has. Employees that are strategic partnership program managers that, where all they work on strategic partnership to. Strengthen ties between uh, nonprofits to do building for housing. And economic assistance for employees or, you know. The, there's, there's other communities that are obviously larger than us. That have these positions just to create and, and strengthen these partnerships, whether that be between. Picken County and ACTA, or Picken County and SKECO, or ACRA, and SKE, building these networks of. Relationships and partnerships for these programs, so I think that maybe just can be built out a little bit more.
Okay, more emphasis there.
Yeah, like consider, I mean, we need to be aggressively pursuing opportunities.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, I think it's worth noting that um, unlike. Their communities or smaller towns or, you know, Picken County doesn't have an economic development. Like department, right, and so there's. Part of this is kind of, how do we work within these different strategies and partnerships? But recognizing that there's not someone who's just tasked with that strategic economic partnership, so. Part of this is also, you know, from you all too, to make recommendations around the implementation, but um. Part of where, if you had a full economic development, that's appropriate in a different community, you know, Picken County. There's reasons that that doesn't exist based on our kind of um, other community partners that kind of play more of that role. But I think just worth acknowledging that that kind of, what it, what is the role for the county here? And how to really leverage those partnerships in support of economic, um, you know, support for local businesses and, and economic stability. So.
So aggressively pursue and leverage opportunities at, at the very least.
Yeah, pursue opportunities, there's way to.
Yeah, that we don't, that we don't specifically have.
Yeah.
The ability to influence it to the extent that other communities do.
Um, what else here on this economic sustainability section?
You know, unfortunately. I'm, I'm looking at that, thanks for bringing that up, we do say educational institutions. And it's a little bit unclear whether we're talking about K twelve districts down valley or. And or, you know, should we talk, be talking about, say, Colorado Mountain College and. Not only in terms of even developing. Uh, majors at CMC that could benefit our local workforce, whether it be in um. I don't know, sustain the construction or hospitality, whatever, but also. There, there is a missing link in bus service. From Thunder River up to the campus. Up to the main campus, and that is very challenging. Even if we could maintain strong support, or maintain that with raft on behalf of the students, that would be wonderful. Certain partnerships don't require money, it just requires support.
Yeah, and I think that the intent of having that be educational institution is recognizing that, that. Trying to be inclusive, but we could be more specific there as the, you know, kind of direction from, from Zach. But that, that could say, yeah, K through twelve, you know, uh, higher education, recognizing that there's other age, educational. Institutions that are not a part of necessarily a degree program, right, that's um. You know, there are types of the Aspen Institute or other types of organizations that are through music or other things, so um. Yeah, that, I, I, I think recognizing that there are. A variety of needs from an educational standpoint that kind of target different groups. Okay, that um, that's good input, anything else in this section or you're city? Go to the next. We're gonna go to the next, okay, local food, so um. This section really is coming from informed by um. Feedback that was received from over the last year and a half, but that came through. Community partners asking to recognize organizations like Lift, Lift Up and other um, food system resilience work. From both the agricultural and, and kind of local food um. Production advocates who are trying to really do that in the valley, which is um, something that we have policy direction to support. Um, in addition to a lot of the caucus master plans speak to this, kind of local food production. Um, and um, some of the work of our human services um. Program as well gets at this, so kind of coming from a variety of different angles, so. This has five different policies and it speaks to food security, food system resilience, local food production. Local growers and education for food security. Anything else here? This is a pretty consolidated section, but um. Speaks to the issues that were, and, and kind of best practices as well from a um. Um, comprehensive plan standpoint that are, that are here, but anything else that seems like should be missing or further detailed out? Or, or seems aligned, Doug, does this support your, you were mentioning the. Your kind of, okay, great.
We've had a tough discussion, as I recall, about the boundary between kind of agriculture and commercial agriculture. Few meetings, you know. And that probably belongs, or, or should be reflected somewhere here, and I'm not sure that we've reached to inclusion on that, and I will. Be the first to say, or not the first to say, it's really hard to reach a solution on that. We start a lot with that, and we, we caucus quite a bit, um. But given that. Section five and then some of the other sections here in chapter five. Really do interface with nonprofits in the valley, um. We might think about what. Types of goals we want to set. For the the government intersection with nonprofits. This year, I I understand that there was a big emphasis on. Especially children's services actually providing transportation for the kids to engage in the activity that was provided um. And also forcing the nonprofits to really show what their service base is and what they're doing. Really showing they helped free people or something, and they're asking for two hundred fifty thousand dollars in funding for the next year.
What would inform that goal setting in your mind?
It could be a lot of different things. I I would suggest that we look to our, what is it called? Community something and um. Committee that I think should be reporting or maybe just to report. On grant funding. In the valley. And take a look at who's applying and what the challenges are. And perhaps develop some strategic direction around those.
And it could just be acknowledged, I mean, it could just be that, recognizing the need to identify strategic direction with community partners to support food. Security and food, you know, kind of this work, but. I think that may be appropriate to identify because you're right, so much of this interfaces with nonprofits and. Um, sounds like the direction will be kind of. In layman's terms, like getting on the same page that we're.
You'll probably go right up with healthy community in that section to just set it right up front, but maybe in the over room. Section five. Because there's an overarching issue in all of chapter five there.
Yeah, and the and the Healthy Community Fund, right, which supports a variety of. Nonprofits is aligned, you know, you apply and you're aligned with those different um. Kind of the outlines within the the realm of the Healthy Community Fund, so. Maybe that's what you're referring to, but that would be a place to kind of identify what the. You know, kind of how the programming that's supported through funding. Results in alignment with those goals. Something like that.
So that could be a a policy and also an implementation. Item, a specific implementation item to um. Move forward.
Yeah, and perhaps you could implement by. Having that local community fund better articulate their strategies and report on those to the county. And what like intentions to do some this time.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Yeah, and Human Services right now is going through and updating their strategic plan. And so that is an opportunity as well that that could align, so I think there's some good synergy there. Okay. Anything else, Zach or or um? Doug? I I keep seeing the Greg and the Kelly side right in front of you and. I'm like, I know it's not Greg. I know you're not Greg. Um, okay. I'm going to go to public safety and emergency response. This is um, supporting a lot of the work that comes from the. Hazard mitigation plan, the continuative uh continuation of operations plan, generally the work that Picking County. Um, emergency management um carries out. A variety of these kind of high level direction is pulled from the hazard mitigation. Um, implementation, who, which is in the intent of that is really to integrate hazard and emergency response with other planning documents. So um, which is a great opportunity for the comprehensive plan to kind of elevate a variety of those. Efforts to make sure that that planning is done and integrated with some of the other community services. So these are. Broad-based but implemented through specific um. Hazard mitigation operations and um. Emergency response operations that are carried through by the county already. Um, so emergency operations broadly, emergency management is in here. Prevention, protection, mitigation, response and recovery, those that have those five terms are supporting. Um, work pretty specifically within in alignment with the hazard mitigation plan. Emergency communications, this is something that that policy specifically came through. Um, both the the planning work that the emergency management team is doing that um. Has been beta testing a variety of different emergency communications, starting this summer. It's gotten a lot of community feedback that just, hey, we need to amplify this emergency communications. Same with emergency evacuation as well as health service coordination. Um, so those are both policies that came from. Pretty specific public input and um, the the services that now the county is um, working on and working toward. So that's the arch of what's included within this section. Questions, comments. Support edits, um, what do you think?
I only have boring stuff.
We'll take it.
My my point is. There's nothing boring stuff with it. And maybe if we did provide this critical community services, your subchapter. Maybe we could bring up some of the boring stuff, code enforcement, uh. The traffics, the education, you know, the really boring stuff that we do need and rely upon every day. And but we do absolutely need um sheriff's deputies, we. We always need more deputies on staff. They are underfunded. And as we grow, there just can be more so. We shouldn't turn a blind eye to that.
And I'm wondering, if if I, if I may, just I'm wondering, kind of makes me think, you know, part of this is that the. Intent of these policies is not necessarily to write the scope for every operation that the county does. Right? But certainly set the policy direction for what we want to further support or needs, you know, enhancement or needs support, but. You know, we wouldn't put every. Every detailed operation of like. Comdev, plan review, continue to do, you know, so I I guess kind of a question would be within that, I hear you. What would be from a policy standpoint beyond what is. Currently. You know, scoped and identified as the boring stuff or kind of the con continuation of critical operations. Are there aspects there that would be helpful to be. Supported from a policy standpoint because that might be implemented in a way that's. Different than what's happening now or feels like needs to be amplified because there's need of more support or. I'm just kind of thinking, what's the through line between having a policy statement and. Continuing on with the current operations.
If if I can interject, I think your comment about. The need for those essential community service providers maybe addresses the issue that you just brought up in that. One of those essential community service providers is. Sheriff's Department and for enforcement and um, so maybe it's already covered. Or needs to be emphasized. In the policy that that is already in the plan around. That need for for essential community service providers. I may be. That may be off base, but. It's a thought.
Well, in terms of strategic planning, this is a twenty-five year strategic plan. Which isn't a hugely long time period, usually that's fifty or so. But. We are planning for population growth, economic growth. And I understand the intent of this document to be a strategic planning document. And. Not that an aspirational dream. Project, though there's some of that to it, uh, but there's also this boring part. Which is what we need to grow and what we need to keep our eyes on. And so we wouldn't want anybody to look at this seven years from now and say, well, there's never any intent to, you know, provide for code enforcement officers or. Teachers or when when I think we would have agreed, we need those to get us. Through the twenty-five years, and we're going to need growth in those sectors, we're going to need housing for those sectors, we're going to need. Uh, to provide some measure of affordability for people to provide those services if we're going to maintain a community here um. And so I think we should just say so, the doctor, but these are critical in the sense that they're not critical in getting us to our aspirational dreams, while they are. But they're the really boring part. And we can't forget the really boring part.
And 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 specifically, it sounds like the people, right, supporting from a staff standpoint and a resources standpoint. Yeah, and just just so, just to, just to kind of uh be on the same page. In the existing conditions portion of the plan, we lay out what the growth projections are, which are. Minimal, right? Like we're talking about, we're not, and I don't have that number off the top of my head right now, but just so we're. Clear on this, that that growth curve is very much getting. Not not going up is is kind of leveling out, so sure, between now and twenty fifty, some level of growth, but what we're planning for and what our expectations are not. Exponential or. Wild amounts of growth by any means, so you know, kind of the framing of this is that. What we have now from a population standpoint is intensive in terms of how that uses our resources. But from the people, amount of people standpoint, that's not projected to be. Substantially more from a population standpoint, but maybe intensive in terms of how that utilizes our resources. Unless we're addressing some of these things to try to mitigate some of those impacts. So so just to kind of level set there.
I think it's important that the comp plan doesn't get too specific on some of those items. I mean, if we look at each one of these, develop, plan, develop, plan. Advanced actions for plan. Design actions to support, plan for actions, ensure that communication plans, supportive emergency evacuation planning. I mean, it's all planning to do those kind of things. I don't think that it's necessary to say. We have to have enough. People to do all those kind of things. I I think it is somewhat aspirational, it is somewhat. Uh, you know, a. A big, a big picture document. I mean, in some areas. Um, it needs to be very specific, you know, in in some of the building codes and those kind of things that we're very. Feel very strongly about um. These areas. I I I have no experience in planning for emergencies at all, right? And I'm sure, and there's a lot of people that do, I don't know how much the information we need to put in the comp plan. To help those people. We need those organizations that plan those. You know, plan for those uh in the in in that in that abilities. Right, the things that are gonna happen, but I don't know how specific in the comp plan it needs to be, and I think that's what we're seeing here.
Yeah.
Are you feeling that there's too much specificity?
No, I don't think there's too much specificity, but I think the level that is there is 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 enough for. Someone for me, you know, I I don't, you know, as I say. The professionals in this area, which I believe we've spoken to, are saying, these are what we need to do, we need to plan. Develop emergency operation programs and commit resources to save lives. I I absolutely support that one hundred percent. And whatever they need, I think we're saying. We're here to support those needs. I don't think we needed to say. You know, you guys need to give us a plan or or whatever. I think we're saying. As the as the comp plan going forward, we support, we understand that these things are very important, we absolutely support them. Do it, take it on, take it on your hands, don't, don't. If we make the document too. Volumous. You know, it's gonna be like, oh, my God, there's too much information here. So I think we need to be, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a balancing act, for sure. If you want to give enough specificity, as you say, that it works for twenty-five years, but not so much that, you know, it becomes unwieldy.
Right, and to your point too, Doug, I mean, we we don't want to overstep on others, and we've worked for this language a lot with our. County staff to make sure that this is the right level to support their work, but not to. You know, try to direct outside of our own lane, um, but I think going back to what you're saying, Joe, I mean, I think that we can. Move that critical services piece into that, you know, kind of earlier where we talked about kind of that other. Portion to recognize, you know, some level of support to move these. Critical services onward, but um, that balance is that we don't need to put. Every single, we need personnel for every single one of these things, you know.
But I think we should mention code enforcement, for instance. Um, it's something that's come up in this committee a number of times, even in my short tenure. Um, and it's come up in other community. Service positions they've had. Um, again, something. Not fancy at all, most people are likely to think about it, but it's definitely a need. Um, and. I just want to reflect on comments about growth, um, certainly in terms of population, um, that live here. Growth projections are mild. But. Based upon my experience in my life living in seasonal tourist areas. We could.
I know you're going, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've I've done long range planning before and and was educated in it, and I've made a. A bunch of calls even back then that people thought were crazy, um, and so you can think I'm crazy, but I've actually seen the season of Latin. Um, where our shoulder seasons are probably gonna fill up. Uh, because people like to come here no matter what time of year. And through time, we are. Probably in twenty-five years, we likely will be a year-round tourist destination. And then if we flatten out our short-term rentals. Um. We can expect more. Uh, well, a combination of things. More residential people living here in the existing housing base, which might be a bit of shadow growth that's hidden in our current demographics. Uh, and then perhaps better utilization of the properties that do rent. Um, all of which increases our. Resident equivalent mode, shall we say, even though those are not all. Uh, people that live here all the time.
Yeah.
So we need to be a little bit careful when we think about demographics and growth projections, because they're a combination of. Tourism, residential units, and demographic.
Yeah, no, definitely, and I I think that the. The, you know, the way that we're framing this and the way that we've talked about growth. Which the growth, the growth management, you know, the growth advisory committee talked about was. Not just around population, full-time population, but certainly recognizing that our. Population that increases seasonally or July fourth weekend is really different than what our full-time population is. But also that there is a level of intensity that's not. Just about people, a special event happens or some, you know, there's the X Games happen, there's a ton of people coming in, so. On the same page with you, just recognizing that growth looks really different, that term looks really different in our community because. We're a seasonal community, we're a tourism-based community, we're a resort community, we have a lot of second homes, and so. It's not just population projections alone, so I just wanted to be. Just kind of tease that out a little bit, that we're not using, we're using growth in the way that we recognize that there's. Population projections mean one thing, but for our community, there's so many other factors that we need to look at when we're thinking about. You know, how we provide community services based on the dynamics that change seasonally.
Absolutely, you just brought up another dynamic of it that I left out, which is the peak load problem, that you have to have services for the peak load. Even though they're generally not used for the rest of the year.
And we have the commuting workforce on a daily basis that comes and goes, so that's another factor, right?
Yeah, and the growth balanced against the current. Age of the infrastructure. Around it, right? So we could have very low to no growth at all. But we have aging infrastructure, if you have a community that has flat growth rate, but then. Has a two-lane bridge, that's the only thing that gets you into town, that's still too much growth because of the infrastructure and the things that supply and. Keep the growth moving to wherever it needs to go. Cannot service any of that, even close to that.
Right, right.
So then kind of going back to those critical community needs and those boring things, they're actually not so boring. And that's why I think we need to specify them a little bit, so we don't take our eye off the ball. Over the next twenty-five years, and remember, there is a base here that. We need a bandage where that's actually the flux.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I think that all makes, that's good, that's good input and um. That makes, that makes sense. Um, shall we continue on or anything else here on six? Hey, I'm gonna go to the. Yeah, it's a good discussion and. We are, you know, very aware of how those dynamics are, you know, at play, but really helpful to have a part of. very aware of how those dynamics are, you know, at play, but really helpful to have a part of this discussion. So seven is hazard mitigation. This is pretty specific to um the different types of risks that are present within our community. Um, so broadly, this has planning for hazard mitigation again in support and trying to point kind of a pretty direct arrow toward the hazard mitigation plan work that um the emergency management team directs, impacts to human life and safety being primary aspect of that. Um, increase public awareness regarding those risks, resilience to hazard. This has some overlap with the environmental hazards, which is in the natural environment section that we reviewed several months ago, but just acknowledging that. Um, collaborative planning and then equity within hazard mitigation um planning, which is a specific um mandate through the um hazard mitigation plan to make sure that access and functional needs are considered and planned for within their work. So this is the last section within that community and economic health chapter. Anything else here, comments here, or anything else kind of broadly within the section that feels like important to make sure we include?
And I'll only, I'll add one comment there before, sorry to jump in, but um, under zero seven point three, um, there's a, the last part of that phrase says promote hazard mitigation activities by residents, and that is something that has been um emphasized in several of the caucusary master plans. That we need to promote mitigation activities, support mitigation activities at the local level. So I just wanted to um point out that consistency with caucus plans that we've, that we've, uh, that's been a theme for years now.
Is this primarily wildfire?
I I would say in the caucus master plans, most of the hazard mitigation um preventative measures have been around wildfire prevention.
Debris flow.
Debris flow, um.
There's a few other water, yeah, some of the water, water quality, which is a kind of broader. So there's a variety of aspects.
Yeah, we might have an introductory bullet about the key risks. The, uh, what we just said there.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, and that's in the, that's in the broader introduction to the plan, but I think I agree, I think it makes sense to have that appear too.
Yeah, I think it's way back in the beginning, but it's not.
Yeah.
We're in chapter five and we lost sight of.
It's helpful to have it here, agreed.
And I'll just, as a side note, the Aspen Fire Department, the um the wildfire adapted communities project, the risk map that you can go on and go through each zone of the county, like house by house, and find out which wildfire risk zone it's in. And then as owner or property manager, uh, you know, the the way that it's works with the Aspen Fire Department is you can get a wildfire risk assessment from the fire department where they come up and they give you a risk assessment, they go through the amount of uh, you know, dead fall timber on the property, dead trees, how how many feet there are from the house, and then based on how you mitigate that and do wildfire brush mitigation, they can get your wildlife risk assessment changed. From, you know, red, very high to high or moderate to low. But that tool is amazing. There's a ton of counties that do not have that tool. But I know that there's other, you know, there's other um assessment tools that also integrate, you know, uh, flood, debris, avalanche, all those other risks into into that. So that's just something to bring up if we're talking about hazard mitigation. I mean, obviously wildfire is the main thing we gotta really we're, that we're talking about, but there are a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, we can point to that and implementation piece as well, that's good to to note. And our Picken County G I S does have all those layers, right, of all those hazards of debris flow and avalanche and rockfall and fluvial hazards and wildfires, so. Yeah, good, good note, and that's a good um resource to make sure that we identify.
We have page nine and intro to chapter five, the the wildfire evacuation in hybrid eight two accidents, maybe that's the portion to expand.
Okay.
Again, that name everyone, but the the top three or four may be sufficient to kind of expand the mind beyond the obvious.
Okay, anything else here? And I will say, I mean, we we went through, we've been working through this iteratively, right? So we went through all the kind of planning goals, objectives and earlier sessions with you all, so we're kind of going into the policies, but if there's anything else in this portion of the plan in this chapter, um, good to ID that too. Okay, well, let's keep us moving and I um will pass it to Ellen to go through regional approach if we're ready to do that. And um I can jump between this stock and the other one too, if you want to just go to those policy sections and.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we we may as well. I I just, I'll give an overview of the policy areas contained within this chapter specifically. Uh, there were five policy areas. Uh, regional transportation, regional housing, regional climate, air quality and strategic partnerships. Um, as Hannah Hunt said in the previous chapter, and as you know, regional housing came out of this chapter and that topic area was consolidated um under one um, section within the built environment chapter. So regional housing is no longer a part of this specific chapter. Um, but starting with regional transportation, really, uh, this area's establishes broad support for regional transportation policies and programs. Um, and uh, the policies within this section um, would be carried forward through new and ongoing county programs and coordination with with partner agencies. So um, to jump into specifics here, to the right page.
Could just three.
Yeah, I don't know if I was saying, so, I'm sorry. So, um, so, region, starting with the the first area, regional transportation. Uh, we we've heard a lot about regional tra- or transportation per se, um, from public outreach over the last several months from the Planning and Zoning Commission and um Community Growth Advisory Committee. There are transportation policies contained within the Built Environment Chapter, some specifics. Um, but this is really looking at the broader regional uh aspect of transportation. So uh, yeah, it, we speak directly to working collaboratively or collectively for regional transportation. Um, identify regional transportation goals, support regional public transportation. Uh, there's a brief policy, um, pretty broad policy around the Aspen Picken County Airport. Uh, the need for road management partnerships, coordinated transportation data collection. Um, and and that's where this section um leads off, so. Any thoughts um about um what's working here? Um, is there anything missing? Um, anything need need to be clarified or added? And this, we've worked with this, we've worked with the elected officials transportation committee. Uh, on this section as well as, as well as the um Picken County Public Works Department. Um, and the, and the county engineer. So those are some of the some of the uh departments and the, and agencies, I guess you'd call it E O T C um, that we've worked with to to pull this together.
Yeah, and I would just add that there are a variety of broader transportation efforts, regional transportation planning efforts that are in the nascent stages now. And so this is kind of, um, Doug, going back to what you're talking about, this is not some of these statements are pretty broad in general and are pointing toward the intent to do that larger regional planning. But the goal setting for some of those regional strategies is not happening as a part of the comp plan process, but would happen as a part of a specific regional transportation planning process. So we want to leave space for that and identify that that's happening, but not try to lay out specific goals here that may be not fully developed because that is in its early stages.
I guess the only thing is that um we want to have anything about, you know, future technologies or, you know, kind of the service between communities or something like that. New technologies, you know, that that might solve some problems or something. And there's been a conversation for years about some sort of transportation of snow mass, whether it's through a real career value or a fresh career value or whatever, it's not a real way. Need to say anything or need to say anything about, and who knows what's next.
I I can tell you that we do, within the built environment chapter, there is a transportation section that does speak to, and I think you'll remember, it does speak to the potential for, um, I don't think we we called them gondolas or overhead transportation as one of those potential um, options. I don't know that we speak directly to other potential technologies, and maybe that would be a good um, addition, but um, it is, it is addressed there. And that really would be a more, I think, local, um, rather than regional to hard, hard saying, but transportation approach, but yeah. And we do talk about rail corridors in that same transportation section under the built environment. Yeah, we do. Um, and I guess that's both local and regional, so there there are some cross cutting themes here, and I think we have
We can look at what, what makes sense to live here, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good note.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else here? This regional transportation, I'm
I don't know, I sort, I sort of think one point one there's not much more to be said. These, these issues are all so far out there. We can dip into specifics then back to really high level, find the sweet spot.
I think maybe one point two gets looped into one point one.
The one point four goes to the airport specifically, one point three is still very general. I mean, do we wanna, should this be organized around airport buses, autos? And just in general, or then you have to do the collection, it's just separate or or umbrella that we're on, but. That always seems like a whole other bag.
Yeah, we can think about how that's structured. I mean, generally, the intent is to go from kind of broad and narrow down, but there are a few kind of disparate areas here. Yeah, we can think about that structure. I think consolidation of a little bit would be helpful and um yeah, looking at some of what's in the built environment section to see if that makes sense here and vice versa.
Right.
But seems like we've, we've got kind of a lot covered. Doesn't sound like I'm hearing anything critical missing between this and the other section.
Right.
Let's go, if we can, to climate action and regional climate action. Again, noting that that two regional housing was moved into the housing section.
So, yeah, so this section um identifies opportunities and partnerships to connect local climate action work, that's our climate action plan. Um, at very least to to climate action efforts across our region. And I think we all agree that that we can't just multi-climate actions um in isolation, that we really need to work um regionally to 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 make um, to make any advances there. And again, these policies will be carried forward through new and ongoing county programs like um the climate action plan in coordination with with other regional partners and coordination with with those partner agencies. So, um, yeah, we, we specifically speak to um integrative resilience and adaptation. Um, regional partnerships for climate action, as I just alluded to, regional waste collection. Um, this is something, yeah, that we can't just look at in isolation. Um, alternative fueling infrastructure, clearly, um, elect, i- if we're moving um towards electrification, we need to be looking not just at at our, at our county, but looking regionally. Uh, continued coordination and shared resources convening with regional partners and jurisdictions for continued collaboration to achieve mutual goals. Um, including topics around supporting the work of the Regional Med Zero roadmap effort. Which, if you have questions about that, Hannah Hunt is gonna be um better informed than I uh to discuss that specific. Collecting and sharing regional climate data, um, finding opportunities for clean energy production, storage and demand response, um, demonstration projects and sharing learnings to support the clean energy transition, which is again, something we need to do um, on a regionalized basis. So those are the specific policies uh here, speaking to regional climate action. Do you do we need clarification here? Is there anything missing? Um, any comments?
So we'd love to ensure effective battery recycling. If that's just a bad effective recycling, there it is. Like I, I would say that if we're requiring batteries to be on site for summer installations and such. Should be mandated that that was going to recycling.
All right, just out of, I don't know, are there effective recycling um avenues?
They're, they are very highly recyclable, but they're not required to be recycled.
Okay.
The implications are pretty dramatic because there are a lot of heavy metals, nasty stuff up something.
So on a regional basis, right? Was there a second, I'm sorry, so it was requiring battery recycling uh, at a regional scale, was there, was there a second item there? I'm sorry, I missed it.
No, that's all.
Okay, okay.
As as we go into section four, there's kind of a, I don't know if these two belong together, three and four. Three starts out with a great stream watershed.
Sure.
And and then we have a separate chapter.
They, they are, they are all, several of these topics are interrelated. They they are, they are all, several of these topics are interrelated. Clearly, um as they should be. I don't wanna rush you, but if we're ready to move into the next, yeah, watershed. Watershed wide environment protections um. This I, as it, as as the title um suggests, this identifies policies and programs to support. Environmental protections across the lands and waters of the entire roaring fork watershed. You really need to look at these. Um these issues on a on a watershed basis um. And again, these would be implemented, carried forward. Through new and ongoing county programs and and coordination with with partner agencies. Um specifically, we're looking at. Uh support for regional biodiversity, habitat and wildlife, that's something that. Certainly crosses jurisdictional boundaries and needs to be looked at on a regional basis. Um regional environmental conservation coordination. Preservation and enhancement of the roaring fork watershed as a whole um. Headwaters interest, we are a headwaters county.
Some of these get get pretty difficult because, you know, the Shoshone water thing is. Critical for the Colorado River and the and the um entire basin. And Picken County was against it because of possible the diversions, you know. So I have a problem with this one. I know the county came around and is supporting the Shoshone purchase now. But I think sometimes we need to look at the big picture, not just at the roaring fork.
Is this headwaters interest? Is that your specific?
Preserve and enhance roaring port water watershed, you know, the county was against. The Shoshone purchase because of potential additional calls. On the Grizzly reservoir thing and most of the roaring fork, but. But the west, it's a really good thing. So this this one's really difficult for me. To sup- to support our roaring fork watershed at the expense of Western Colorado. So I think that it's the difficult issue. I'm not, I'm not taking, you know, water is difficult. Right, but but um you know, I had a, I had a long conversation with my county commissioner about this issue. He was the one that told me why the county was not supporting the Shoshone. Power plant, you know, buying, supporting it financially to pay public service for that water right. As I understand, the county's come around and they're supporting it now, but but this kind of talks about that, and I think that it's important that we don't get too. One for Valley focused if we're talking about regional. That that's my take. Headwaters and running pork interest, you know, it needs, we need to have a little bigger picture sometimes. I think we talked about it, but regional approach, a lot of, a lot of these things. But this kind of talks not regionally, this talks. Up the line for between here and basalt. Because the frying pan puts the water back in, that's out of our. So that's one word.
Yeah.
I kind of have a. Not sure how we uh reconcile this, but. So, you know. This gives, this gives credence to the thing that, well, we're gonna do what's best for Roanoke River between basalt and. In the end, in terms of the headwaters, opposed to what's better for Western Colorado.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know exactly, but as I say, we're gonna reconcile it, but. Sometimes you need to look more regionally than if this isn't looking regionally.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay, that's a good.
Do you advocate? Are are you advocating making? A statement regarding what our level of engagement or reliable engagement. Should be going forward, but that's probably the wrong way to put it.
No, I realize what I'm saying is very difficult to, you know, putting writing and and how to say that and everything. I I just wanna. I just wanna be really careful about not. Focusing only on this little piece and using the complaint that says that. I don't, I don't know how we. You know, I mean, I'm so, I'm for supporting Roanoke for sure, right? Um but sometimes the regional approach, you know, you have to give a little. It's not great for the Roanoke, but it's better for the rest of Western Colorado, so. So how we say that?
Yeah, and I would just say.
Sure, if we wanna, if we wanna say specifically, um that we wanna. Only support the going forward, which is not really what this says, but it kind of says it.
You wanna say something like people who know a lot more about it than me or deal in in water policy and. Hydrology and water law in the West, when they look at a drainage. Like the roaring fork drainage that that drainage is looked at as really. That's part of the greater Colorado River drainage base. So we're at the top of the key. When it comes to water rights and flow, everything runs downhill from us. So decisions that we make. Effect everything down to. Where the Colorado River does not exit and see of course has because it's solely dry. So. I guess what maybe what Doug, what we're getting at is that there needs to be more, any, any, any um. Any watershed decisions need to be. Looked at on a couple levels, the roaring fork level and then a larger level of the the greater Colorado. The basin and.
Under, yeah, understood, understood, and this policy is not intending to. Just be about upper roaring for Colorado interests, so.
Water share which includes.
Yeah, so I think we can update that to be. Yeah.
About it, it's like forty percent of the Colorado or something. Colorado River.
Right.
It does say the entire enhanced the roaring fork watershed, it doesn't talk about, because the next one talks about the headwaters. So I I might be overstating my case.
But understood, we're not trying, the the intent from your standpoint is you're not trying to make a statement that could be supporting just. Interests of upper roaring fork interest at the expense of the broader watershed. So. I think that we can update that and with. Insight into the Shoshone issue, we can adjust this to be. Um we're we're not try, this is not trying to be like a sneaky policy in support of the county's Shoshone hang up, so. Um but with insight into kind of the um. Dynamics at play, we can adjust this to make sure that this is not speaking to just upper roaring fork interests.
The headwaters piece related discussed, but more of what went forward is supposed to come from three, four point three is more a regional approach.
Yeah, four point, I think it's four point four that gets. Yeah.
That's that's the headwaters.
Right, yeah, ensure that that's a regional statement, I think is um. We can take that direction and and make some adjustments.
And at the same time, we are headwaters. We wanna make.
Yeah.
Make that statement as.
And we'll just remind that there is a separate water section with, that's within section. Chapter two of the natural environment that speaks to a lot of the variety of different um water conditions and water considerations. Um so, yes, and we we're also reviewing all these policy statements related to water with the water. Um legal team, so that's also in works, but yeah.
Your point getting to maybe I misheard it. But I I heard you asking more of a question of. To what degree do we want to articulate? The county's desired level of engagement. Whether with regards solely to water needs for citizens. Or in or one local water resource conservation for sport fishing. Going beyond that, overall advocating for the western slope and the Colorado River. Which are all different levels of engagement, all of which we may may choose to engage in. Depending on what you wanna do as a county. Are you asking? What are we articulating here? What and what do we want to articulate here? I, it's kind of above our pay grade, but right. It would, this seems to me something that would fit in a strategic plan, we're articulating our desired level of engagement. Are we willing to fight to the regional level to? Are we willing to fight with the front slope? Are we willing to fight statewide, right, and to fight federal battles? There could be a lot of battles in water, as it is, we fight trans basin diversion.
Right.
So we're engaged.
My my point is that I wanna make sure it's a reasonable enough effect and not, and not be too. My hope is to focus on the headwater piece, you know, we gotta, we gotta look at the bigger picture, because. You know, the Roanoke, it's a big piece, but there's, there's other bigger fish.
Yeah.
The Shoshone piece is a bigger piece, that that water right is bigger than. Potentially having a little less water in the in the work during period, some months, I mean, a drought area.
Understood, and we can, we will adjust that statement to speak to the regional interest. I think that the level of engagement is a piece that's kind of. Tied up in variety of legal um and water rights obligations that are. Outside this, you know, details that are outside just this portion of the cop plan policy, but. Understood the orientation for for this portion.
So Doug, is is an appropriate way to view your comment? Through the lens of specificity that we talked about earlier, that perhaps what we're saying in this section is. A little bit too specific, getting to headwaters versus other issues, and and maybe we should just be saying, look. Pickin County, located where located, water issues are part of our green net. Maybe we articulate a strategic plan to further develop our knowledge and integration with it, water. And water law issues that affect our county um. Kind of leave it there, maybe.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think that the regional thesis looks important to me is that, and and we look at. And and I, you know, when we talk about this regional, you know, area, they talk about, you know, the headwaters and up to frying pan all the way to the backhand in basic. Which is, I mean, that's what I talk about. Workforce anyway, and that's kind of the region, so I think that it's important that. The regional effect, especially when we're talking about water, is, you know, includes the Colorado, not just the Roanoke basic.
Well, on a, on a.
Not too much specificity, because we don't have the ability, you know. Who knows what's gonna happen? We didn't come to an agreement on Tuesday, so who knows what's gonna happen?
Right, um on a, on a sort of broader level, oh, oh, four point five just generally. Uh recommends integrated water source resource management. Fostering cooperative regional management of water resources. By pursuing an integrated water resource management approach to collaborate. To let collaborate across sectors, jurisdictions and agencies for planning and implementation. That's, that's a very broad. Statement, but it 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 speaks a little to the direction that you're suggesting, and we can adjust the previous. That oh four point um, oh four point four policy to be a little broader too. Um if I may, unless you have anything to add there.
Go for it.
Um. Oh, four point six speaks to regional coordination for drought management. We all know that's a. Really significant issue that continues to be more and more significant. Um. Also, this is not related to water, oh, four point seven uh expresses the need for regional support for federal and state lands. And I think that's a very relevant issue today, uh given what's going on at the federal level. Um and also that is carried forward to some extent from existing policies in the land use code today, so. Um anything else? That was a really interesting discussion. Thank you for that. Good, good input. Um anything else on this section?
I'm looking back at two, can we never appear in habitat or water quality? This is more quantity and water rights here. So is that your understanding in terms?
You're going back to the natural environment section?
Looking back to see what we have in water there.
So, yeah, the section that's in two would be is water quality and quantity. Um and also changes to development review basically to increase water adequacy in a variety of different ways. So that's what's in chapter two, that's really going to be, the intent of that would be to be implemented through land use code. Changes to increase water um requirements to ensure sufficient and reliable water supply. This section that Ellen just went through on the regional is really kind of. Not just about the water that's within our watershed, but the land that's within the watershed as well, and kind of partnerships to support that. So the primary water policies are within that. What you're looking at, I I believe, Joe, that's in the natural environment, chapter um section two. Whereas this is kind of the broader statements around the regional watershed beyond the county, so.
Revlex back to, I don't think to be said here.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe it, I don't know. I guess that's what I was looking for for that attachment.
Again, I.
And recognizing that there's watershed advocates, you know, the roaring for conservancy, which works broadly beyond the scope of Pickin County that um. We are, we are intending to be um supporting the work to protect and preserve the. Um watershed, in addition to the work on the Crystal River, that's. Inside Pickin County as well as outside the county's um jurisdictional boundaries. So certainly there is a little bit of overlap, but the intent here is to recognize the regional nature. Um I wanted to recognize that we've got another section to go through, and. We have public in the room too, so Chair, I'll let you manage that, but just wanna do a time check and make sure that we've got time to do all those things.
And, yeah, I I think if we're ready to move to the next section, we can walk through it um. Pretty quickly, um if you're ready. Okay.
This might be. The with the last thing, with the wa- watershed line environmental protection section. The city of Aspen has its own integrated water management plan that does not. Allosing with some of these goals. So how do we, you know, they bought a, they have their own property in Roy Creek where they wanted to water res- reservoir storage. Maroon Creek, and you know, those water rights filings were. Contested by like Trout Unlimited or for Conservancy Wilderness Workshop. So how do we? Find alignment with, you know. With with that. That would, you know, and that's just some of these goals don't align with what the city's plan is, so.
And I guess apart from the storage, the water storage, what other, what are these plans, what are these policies do, would you? Identify that don't align with their.
Preserve and enhance the roaring fork watershed. I mean, I guess, I'm, and I could be wrong, but I'm guessing the, the. The argument that Wilderness Workshop and Trout Unlimited and the people who. Might disagree with the water storage plan that the city of Aspen has would would say that. You know, that type of water storage and pulling that water out of the roaring fork doesn't preserve and enhance. The watershed should stay in the river. That's, that would be my only guess, but I could be totally wrong. I just wanna see what you guys think. I mean, something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say we've been in the, you know, especially, especially within the water quantity. Portions and the work that went into that kind of alignment of land use policies with water supply. Um their Aspen Integrated Water Management Plan has been. Um, their Aspen Integrated Water Management Plan has been a and the water. Um, staff at the city of Aspen, we've been in.
Yeah.
You know, dialogue and communication with throughout, I think that. You know, certainly the document that you have in front of you is the Picking County document, so I don't. I don't think that you would not include four point three, for example, because that is. You know, has some issue with the Integrated Water Management Plan, I think that this is also an opportunity, you know, this is why. These policy statements do matter, right, so you can put a policy in place, and if there's a plan where there's some conflict with some other. Aspect, we recognize, you know, broadly speaking, the intent behind. Picking County's approach to regional water management, kind of like Doug said, is to, you know, support the Roaring Fork watershed as a whole. And if there's another document that or another planning from another jurisdiction that has conflict, this is a good place where there's. Um, you know, policy basis for the approach, certainly there's. You know, what's codified and what legal agreements from a water rights standpoint are, um. You know, in in certain cases would be the, this is an advisory document, right? But putting plans in place with recognition that this is the approach that. Picking County Planning Commission wants to take is your opportunity to put your. Perspective and planning direction in, you know, on paper.
And we may not be able to reconcile differences.
That's not our job here to do, I'm just bringing it up, it's something where.
It's a good, it's a good point, but this does provide the opportunity, it states our policies. And provides an opportunity perhaps to work collaboratively.
And from a staff level, we are engaged with the water planning folks at City of Aspen and understand what. You know, we're, we're working to understand their. Um, implementation of their work and implementation of Picking County's work, so. There is that level of of engagement that's happening from a staff standpoint.
Alright.
Yep, good, but good point, yeah, thank you for that, um.
Strategic partnerships?
Yeah, so, uh, this. This section recognizes the value of regional partnerships and identifies strategic areas where partnerships are essential. Um, the first, uh, the first policy support regional planning, uh. Foster and strengthen relationships. Across the board, um, especially to deal with issues around. Transportation, housing, open space, water resources, agricultural lands. Solid waste facilities, public safety. Wildfire mitigation and human and social services, so really, this is a really broad reaching. Um, policy, but it. It identifies the common issues across that exist across jurisdictions that need to be worked on um, regionally. And then next policy uh, speaks to intergovernmental agreements, uh, the county is engaged. In some of these intergovernmental agreements and they are periodically updated. Basically, these facilitate im- implementation of common land use goals, shared community values. And cooperation to address issues of mutual concern, some of those things that might be present in that first policy. Uh, regional wildfire collaboration, I think that heading speaks. Um, to the, to the need there and desire to work collaboratively, um. Regional emergency response, we know now more than ever, given wildfire. Uh, hazards and issues, um, and and occurrences. Um, in recent years that there's a real need for regional multi-agency. Multi-jurisdictional hazard coord- coordination and and incident, incident management, um. Through the Public Safety Council, that's a critical need, um. Regional Emergency Health Service Coordination again is supporting regional emergency health services. Uh, with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. The Office of Emergency Preparedness and Response Field Manager. Regional Epidemiologist and Northwest Regional Healthcare Coalition, oh, I got through all of those without stopping. Um. And then the regional childcare collaboration, again, this is an issue that is constantly at the forefront across. Across the region, I think even in in the, across the entire state. Um, so there's a real need to work regionally to make sure that um, childcare is addressed. Um, and, um, and then this last policy is specific to. Um, the need to promote regional data sharing, um, to facilitate shared understanding of. Demographic, economic and population trends and projections, so. Yeah, Joe, when we're looking at those pop, those trends, it really makes sense to work. To look regionally, to understand the the big picture there. So any thoughts, comments on those specific policies?
Me, one, two and seven are the broader policies and three, four, five and six are kind of, for instance. You know, or examples of ongoing. Policies in place, something like that, more examples. I don't think we need to limit support to those.
I'd list, I'd list in some, we um, eliminate ones we're not talking about essentially, as we're saying.
Yeah, but the five one, yeah, five zero has a longer.
Yeah.
Directions.
Yeah. Like on a specific ones, yeah.
She can do make points, five one, five two and five seven, and then for instance. If we have these four ongoing for opportunities to. Engage others.
So you're suggesting this could be organized.
Station, maybe, yeah.
Organized a little bit differently.
For instance, wildfire emergency response, health service coordination and childcare is kind of. There's a host of some things that we support, not, not that we're not supporting others, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Okay, that's, that's a, a good, um, good thought there. Anything, anything else to add, and Zach is, your body language is suggesting that. No, it is seven, I think we're right up, coming up on seven o'clock.
Well, yeah, and we have two members of the uh, Division. Twenty fifteen uh, committee, is that correct, no? I'll, I'll, I'll open it up for a public comment, if you guys would like to make a public comment.
Uh, yeah, I just have something, Alan Jones from Woody Creek Caucus, hey, Joe.
Would you like to?
Uh, so you, I said, uh, one thought that I I think is pretty critical, so the most alarming thing that I've heard at a caucus. Meeting in, in six years occurred this summer. Where a couple from Lino came and said that they had put out. Three wildfire, three, three campfires in, in the, in, on, on BLM land. Uh, this summer, so I, I was thinking, uh, in that hazard section. You might wanna put something in there that says, uh, encourage safe, so somehow encourage safe use of. Of the public lands or something like that, I, 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 I was even thinking like, okay, we need to get a sign, so apparently. Even despite the, 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 the burn warnings, the, the, the hazard warnings, um. This summer, that doesn't go out, those don't go out to like, uh, you know, pe- people that come in from the outside. Do not get alerted to any of that. And, uh, so I was thinking, well, maybe we need to get some signs up there or something like that. Because they, they said, they thought these, these could have been wildfires.
Alright, thank you very much.
Um, Amber Kerkowski, also from Woody Creek. Um, if I were sitting in one of those chairs, you probably would have heard me pipe in about thirty or forty times. Um, but I'm not, um, a few comments, uh, I do, I'm very appreciative about what, um, you were mentioning, Zach, about. Um, instead of just being, um. Open to opportunities with the municipalities, really kind of pushing municipalities to start to. How, how can we start to create solutions, you know, um, I, I, I grew up in the valley and. You know, of course I have a skewed view on things, I think like a lot of people sometimes do and. Um, I do, I just, I still, I, I just don't understand how. All these developments in municipalities can be approved, and yet. It is up to those people that live in Picking County then have to figure out how to solve the problems that are being created by the larger cities. Um, you know, Woody Creek, you know, it's like to me, for the life of me, you know, when we, we got, um. Through the District Planning Committee, we got some information about this project up at Bell Jack Blue. And, um, that was the approval of. You know, houses and three, three Olympic sized swimming pools, and we stood against that, and yet. Our voice from our caucus and our community was not heard and it got approved, and so to me, there's a big disconnect. Um, on what's being approved and what solutions we're looking to make, um, but I do like, you know, kind of. Pu- pushing the hand of at least trying to have conversations and open the doors to create more, um. Effective and efficient solutions, um, in our, in our valley, cause we're a small valley. And I know that we're all feeling the pressure, and I think that there's a lot of creative ways that we can look at it a little bit differently than. Let's just build more housing, like we've been trying to do for the last twenty five years, which has never. Solved the problem, maybe a little bit, but it's never, we've never been able to overcome that challenge, so why do we think that? Building, just building more is gonna work, um, but, so thank you, that's my three minutes, I think.
Thank you, Amber, alright, great, Bonnie, do we have any other members?
There are no members of.
Okay, great, I'm gonna close a public comment now, and then do we have any other commissioner comments?
Hmm.
Chapter five point six, public safety and emergency response. Ryan, Ellen's comment, maybe he realizes there, uh, what goes to mention, say about rescue and educating backcountry users. In order to avoid emergencies. With the way full of safety, because these are all kinds of responses. Get ahead of it a little bit.
Mm-hmm, there's the prevention six point three, but yeah, that, that, um, is a good note.
And and maybe mention mountain rescue specifically, because they are, you know, funded differently and have a. An important mission in our valley, and they did great with their open houses, if you've ever gone and on their tour, you learn a heck of a lot. It would be great to use them as an educational resource.
Good note.
I learned if you're ever stuck out in the back country and you hear a helicopter, just, you know, go like that if you're. And this thing will show up like spot right under infrared, you don't need a flashlight or anything.
It's a great.
Lot of handy stuff to know.
Good things to know.
Like put up your camp cart.
Well, thank you for all your comments, are there any other commissioner comments on the, this content?
That, do you have any other, do you guys have any other?
Just, just a few things. Just a few things, um, I think this is being reported and for commissioners that are not present, if there are any additional feedback on. These chapters or other things that, you know, you take it after this conversation, want to feed to us, um, that would be great. Our, um, so that would be great to just make sure that we get all the commissioner comments, especially for those who aren't present today. Um, we will be coming back to you on December sixteenth with the implementation. Um, kind of matrix priorities for implementation, and then also the updated. Um, policies based on all of the input that we've received from. You all from open houses that have been fed through the lens of these meetings, so. Um, that will be a thick packet that's got a lot of the policies that. What we had in the eight fifteen version and then what the new version is, so, um, just be ready for. That meeting on the sixteenth that will, um, go through all of that.
If you don't mind, just real quick, your December second meeting is not happening, so you have that little.
So next meeting is December sixteen?
Yes.
Perfect.
December sixteenth.
So happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, and then just to follow that, we will then, with the feedback that we receive from you all on that December sixteenth meeting. We will then create a final document of the comprehensive plan. That in January will then be formally referred out to caucuses, to municipalities, to land managers, to our kind of official referral list. Um, in advance of the public hearing, so then we will come back to you for P and Z to do a. Formal noticed public hearing process to work through the plan, and then we'll go to B O C C. So, uh, we're nearing the end of this process, but just know that that's what's coming down the pike.
Now, we're, we're going to, we have the intensity studies, white paper, I think. We went over that a long time ago, then we had the water study at the end of this, were we gonna come back to those at all?
We were not planning to come back to, um. Present that material, those will be included as appendices to the plan, if there's commissioner comments on those studies, we are. Um, you know, open to hearing feedback on them, but we're not planning to. We're kind of been moving through this, so, uh, we're not planning to revisit this and that unless there's a specific request.
Thank you guys, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, thanks for your hard work.
Same.
Hanging with us.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so. Thank you guys.
Great, amazing, and thanks for making the effort.
Bye.
Bye.